Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five meeting of the school committee. Call the meeting to order five oh three. This meeting is both being both audio and video recorded. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
And with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. The Samantha, if you can start us out.
Samantha Velasco, secretary.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Gregory Thompson.
Antonella Rochella.
William Strathairn.
Amy Johnson.
Yeah, mo- um, minutes for approval, please. I take a motion.
Approve, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Amy, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries four to zero.
I move to approve the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Antonella.
Okay.
Second by Amy, discussion. Nice and short, Sam. Nice work. Thank you so much. All in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay, that carries four to zero. Right. I have committee and subcommittee communications. Amy, would you like to start?
Nothing to ask.
Okay, William.
Um, I had one meeting with the, what was it? Oh, with, um, Home Valley.
Yep.
Um, the, the co-op, the Lord Corporation. Uh, good meeting. We went around and, um, they elected new bodies. They kind of switched roles. Um, beyond that, it was, it was a pleasant meeting and looks like everything is going well. Um, they're having a lot of discussion about the buses. Uh, that, that's a big conversation about the buses and what happened and who's that was who's responsible. But they're nowhere near figuring it out. It can take a while.
Although they're giving us rides. Have you heard about that?
Yes, we're gonna have a ride, um.
Is it Friday?
Friday.
This Friday?
Who's supposed to go to there and, and get the free ride with.
Bus yard.
And so on and so forth.
It'll be good. Once, once they get going, it's gonna be good.
I, I, I do believe that. I think they, they definitely understand it in the, um, director, principal, um, he is executive director. Executive director. He is very knowledgeable about the entire process, understands it from beginning to end. So I think they're in good hands.
You say you wanted to take my spot.
I did say I want to take your spot.
Sold. Oh. Best news of the day. Thank you, William.
Yes.
Antonella.
Nothing I can say.
Okay, I'm all set as well. So we will move on. Uh, opportunity to address the committee. Anyone like to talk today? Seeing none. We'll move right along. We have presentation superintendent's report, East Salamito Public Schools' end of year status report.
Okay, so in your packets and on the screens, we have first the district report and then, as you know, we've split, um, our school reports over two evenings. So we have our elementary, uh, principals and assistant principals here and they'll present, uh, tonight and then tomorrow we'll have the secondary principals and assistant principals present, the end of the year status report. Without further ado, we'll move into it. Let's just give you a quick look at, um, our student population. Uh, you can see some of the things we've talked about through the years. Um, high needs is still forty point nine percent, which is creeping up. One of the biggest drivers of that is the low income, which is a few bars down on the screen there. Uh, twenty-five point four percent is high needs includes your low-income students. It includes your English language learners and it includes your students with disabilities. That's the whole group of high needs. Um, and then you can see how we break down terms of race and ethnicity. Moving on. Uh, you know, we have the three integral goals, uh, for the district and the buildings as well. One is around supporting the whole child and making sure that we're supporting children as they grow academically, socially, and emotionally. Uh, and one of the things that we look at moving into next slide is, um, attendance because you know, in order to do those things with our support, it's really important that you're actually here. Uh, this is attendance as reported to Desi and it was through March. This was the March submission of Sims. Um, so then obviously in the accountability data in the fall, we'll get, uh, April, May, and a little bit of June that we had this year. Everything in yellow, even if it was just a small incremental, uh, incremental, excuse me, um, increase, is an increase. So all our students, the daily attendance rate, that means all, um, close to twenty-five hundred students. Ninety-five point nine percent daily attendance rate and going towards the chronically absent six point eight. That's all improvement upon last year. So our focus.
Recent chronically absent.
Correct. Yeah. Um, yeah, increase in daily attendance, decrease, thank you, in, uh, chronically absence. So we're excited about that. We think, uh, given at least what we're seeing in panorama and power school, that the numbers will not be far off of these numbers when we're presenting again in the fall and we get all the accountability data. So we're excited about that. One of the biggest things I believe that's helping us here is especially in the chronically absent is that we did start teams, attendance teams at the schools and we also have a family care coordinator who works with the teams when, uh, she gets a referral and can really look at some of the medical needs that might be causing some of this. And, uh, a lot of the, what we're finding is that students are chronically absent. More often than not, there is some kind of medical issue. So we're working with our families, partnering with them, and we're seeing improvement. That brings us to teaching and learning, and I know there's a lot of small print there, but we're excited about the fact that as we go into the slides coming up, we did actually, um, hit many of our goals, our district goals in terms of percentages in iReady, which was exciting. One of the things we did, which is why you're seeing all those small bullet points, is instead of going with sort of the theoretical idea of, oh, we should have eighty percent on grade level and then you should have the next ten percent and the next ten percent in terms of your support. We had done that for a number of years, but we were wondering if we were getting lost in the presentation that given what we were seeing in terms of iReady results and the goal of eighty percent, there was such a gap that we started to notch more closer to what, what are we achieving and let's notch it up just a little bit. And we did that this year with some other things that we've also put into play in the district and we're seeing good results. You go to the next slide. Thank you. If you remember at the mid-cycle, um, all three blue dots were in the high performance, high growth range, but they weren't as high. So with the third assessment, we notched firmly into that high performance and high growth level, uh, which is exciting to see. Sixty-five percent of our students in grades one through eight hit their typical growth.
Three, three through eight.
Three through eight? No, I'm sorry. Okay, three through eight and, um, thirty-three percent of our students hit their stretch growth. And our target, uh, sixty-five was our target for typical growth. So we hit it. And we were two percentage points off the stretch growth because thirty-five was our target there.
So the reason why Meadowbrook is not up there is because we utilize DIBELS for reading assessment there now. Um, and I do want to point out that last year we did see the end of year earlier in March, which might affect this, but I just met with the iReady folks, our reps, and they said that the growth is too significant to just be that. So that was really exciting to hear that it's not just because we ended in March and now we're ending in June. Especially when you take into, uh, account all those testing and thing that happens in, in April.
I think that's actually, this next slide, um, this came out of the meeting with our iReady rep. Um, he had said to us that, uh, you know, what might be interesting is you're asking about data. How do you compare to iReady districts in Massachusetts? How do you compare to iReady districts, uh, nationally? Um, if you want to walk us through, sorry.
Well, as you can see, that our district's all the way to the right and we beat out the, the state and nationally. Um, in every category. So you want to have higher numbers in the green, lower numbers in the yellow and the red. So forty-one percent mid or above grade level, twenty-three percent early on grade level. Um, twenty-two percent, uh, one grade level below and so on and so forth. And of course, like, uh, Mr. Smith was saying, you know, ideally we want to start seeing eighty percent all in mid or above grade level, but we're also need to figure out where we're starting from. And since we compared to this map to Mass and our rep represents a middlesex county all the way west and he said, your numbers look better than most of the districts that I'm working with. So just to contextualize, um, the realities. And then this was really exciting because what this shows us is based on baseline placement. So mid or above grade level, those kids tested at mid or above grade level at the beginning of the year. So you want to see them meet their annual and stretch growth because we're challenging them. Kids on early on grade level, you want to see all of them meet that annual or typical growth, um, sorry, and typical growth and stretch growth because we're teaching at that grade level. Um, and then everyone else, we're providing the scaffolding and accommodations to help make sure all kids are accessing that grade level content. And in addition to, you know, what I said about March, I think the biggest shift is, and this is a nationwide shift, we're moving away from teaching kids at their level and really trying to use materials so that all kids can access grade level content and skills. It's a huge shift. It's, it's a, a whole other skill set. And so this is really the result of the hard work of teachers going beyond just internalizing curriculum, but, um, making sure that all kids are having access. It's the hard work of the coaches who are co-facilitating and facilitating common planning times, really looking at data and helping making those adjustments in real time and the hard work of the principals who, you know, were really looking for specific things and, and, um, making sure their feedback was um, targeted to help teachers. So just kudos to everyone in ELPS because those are pretty remarkable.
And math. So now math is first grade to eighth grade.
So you have, if you notice, um, all four schools are firmly in the high performance, high growth sector there, our quadrant. And we exceeded our math uh, targets both for typical growth and for stretch growth, which is exciting. These will be one of some of the things that we get to share with teachers, um, especially as they come back in the fall to celebrate because this was a lot of work to make these kind of strides and as, um, Ms. Brown was just saying, the changes that we did in terms of common planning time and some of the things we were doing with learning walks and discussions we were having with our teachers. All of that happened over the last ten to twelve months. That's a lot of change that took place between, say, last August and this June.
Um, just to point out, forty-five percent of our students last year got their typical growth and that's sixty-two percent this year. And, uh, let's see, twenty-five percent last year went to, oh, sorry.
I think it was seventeen.
Seventeen percent last year and it went to thirty-one percent. So that's very exciting. Um, in terms of meeting those, obviously the typical growth is what you need if you start at grade level to, to maintain. And then the stretch growth, if you're starting behind the, the, um, grade level, you, we really need to do different things to speed up to make sure kids are getting where they need to be to catch up with their peers. And one thing I forgot to mention and when I mentioned all the factors that went into this is also the MTSS teams who didn't get it and making sure kids aren't falling through the cracks. They're getting the interventions they need. Our progress monitoring and we're making sure that those interventions are working. Um, as well as really working with teachers to figure out what things we can do in the classroom as well. Um, so all of these moving pieces and again, uh, did better than the state and the nation in our math um, achievement data.
Pretty excited to find this. I don't know if we would have been as excited last year, but this year we're really excited to have this chart.
Especially like I said, they said, you know, it's more than just a difference in when we gave the end of year assessment. So this is a similar chart, the two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four versus twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. It's in those baseline placements. Um, and you can see, you look at that annual typical growth in the orange versus annual typical growth and the blue significant jumps. Um, and then also in the stretch growth, uh, and across all baseline placements. It's not just like we're really focusing on kids who are really struggling. It's, when, when you see that even just, um, this version, this distribution across the different baseline that's saying that we're meeting the needs of, uh, the majority of kids.
Are the students who are in the percentage of annual stretch growth also in the annual typical growth?
So this, the typical growth, so what they do is based on how they score on that very first diagnostic, they put them in a cohort and then it's, uh, they figure out how much, what their growth target is to basically make that year's growth. And that's based on typical growth of the kids in that, um, uh, cohort. So based on typical growth, some kids, if they're already, you know, starting at grade level, typical growth is enough. They'll, they'll make what they need and they'll get to the end of the school year and ma- master those content and skills. But for other kids who aren't coming to the grade level with all of those content and skills, they need to have that stretch growth in order to catch up with their peers. So you really want to see everyone meeting that typical growth and then kids who are below grade level hitting that stretch growth.
So that reflects ninety-three percent of the students then co- combined.
Tell me what numbers you're looking.
Sixty-two and the thirty-one. Of all students in the twenty-five.
So yes, so, so if we look at, um, this year.
Yep.
Uh, sixty-two percent of all kids met their typical growth goal. Thirty-one percent may, met their stretch growth, growth goal.
Those are different students than those that are may, met the typical growth, correct?
I would imagine you can't meet your stretch growth unless you meet your typical growth.
But you, you wouldn't have stretch growth necessarily if you started at grade level or above grade level, I think is.
True as well.
Your stretch growth is coming from if you're below grade level.
And I get that. Yeah. I'm just wondering if.
The year's growth.
So those students that are reflected in stretch are also reflected in typical.
Yes.
It was the same.
So sixty-two percent of the kids made a year's growth and thirty-one percent made even more than a year's growth. That might.
Part of that.
And thirty-one only made a year's growth.
No, they, they met more than eight. That's, that's stretch.
Thirty-one made, oh, I'm talking typical, thirty-one made typical growth. And thirty-one made stretch, but they are reflected in typical as well.
Is there?
That doesn't reflect ninety-three percent of the students because only seven percent of the, more than seven percent didn't make.
Yes. What's the percentage that didn't make growth?
More than seven percent.
Is that what it is?
I, yeah.
The thirty-one percent, uh, could only make typical growth is what you're saying. This, or.
I thought the thirty-one was in the sixty.
That's what I'm asking. Yeah.
And I thought she said yes.
Right.
So sixty-two percent either made annual typical growth or annual stretch growth.
Right. But of that sixty-two, half of them, half of them made stretch.
Correct.
Okay.
Went above typical to make stretch, yes.
But that's not the case, is it? Because more than seven percent didn't make typical or stretch.
I mean, I'm trying to think about it in terms of two different groups of kid. That's a great question and I really do need to investigate it more if it's one or the other. I feel like it's two different groups of kids because you could.
So seven percent of the students didn't make typical or stretch.
I thought it was thirty-eight percent.
It is more than seven.
Um, let me go back and I can show you a diff- different graph. So if you look at math right here.
Yeah.
So twelve percent of the kids made not quite up to twenty percent of progress towards their typical growth. Does that make sense? So you got sixty-two who met that goal. You have seven percent who almost made that goal, seven percent who got up to eighty percent towards that goal. Does that make sense?
Towards typical growth, their typical.
Their typical growth.
So in the, in those six bars in that graph, typical growth represents a hundred percent of the population.
Correct.
In the lower one, stretch growth, that represents a hundred percent.
Everybody has a typical growth goal and a stretch growth goal.
So the first, under the fourteen percent in stretch, that represents fourteen percent of the population.
Fourteen percent of the population only got to.
Less than nine, eight percent.
Their goal.
Yep.
For stretch.
Their stretch.
Sixty-two percent met the goal.
At their typical growth goal.
And thirty-eight didn't.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. But some got really close if you look.
Eighty to ninety-nine.
Yeah.
Cool.
All right.
Oh, it's good to be in math questions. All right.
That's problem.
Culture and climate.
Um, the, the third goal, although we, we don't number them in specific, uh, is inclusive, it's for culture and climate and predominantly it's our surveys that, um, provide us information around this goal. And we are, uh, keeping with the theme of being succinct. So we went with two highlights, um, important highlights from both the student climate and wellness survey. And we had not done a district-wide family and caregiver survey. So on these surveys, um, it stayed somewhat consistent between the winter status report and now that students, um, whether it be in the grade span of three through five or grade span six through twelve, uh, they're seeing that they have or reporting that they have supportive relationships at school. And that's ninety-one percent and ninety-two percent respectively. Um, one of the things that we're seeing, uh, beginning to take off, um, we're asking different questions around this. So we have a better idea of student engagement. And so we're seeing ninety percent at the three through five level and eighty-six percent, uh, report, uh, that they're actively engaged. Family survey, which was, um, new this year. We looked at, uh, a number of questions, but it was really around how are families seeing our schools, um, when compared with how students are seeing the schools. Uh, and eighty-two percent of our families who responded said that, um, we create in our schools a welcoming and supportive learning environment. We, uh, extremely well and quite well, uh, with fourteen percent reporting, um, slightly well. So we were, uh, actually, uh, quite pleased with that response. One that I think we have to work out a little bit more is, um, seventy-seven percent reported that we're repairing, preparing their children, um, extremely well or quite well for the next grade level. Nineteen percent reported that, uh, we're repair, uh, preparing them slightly well. So that's something that we can start to work on, um, and see how we fare next year with surveys. Questions?
Are we okay with, with, with these two different cohorts?
Yeah, I think we answered it.
Okay. Make sure.
So just, I've seen some improvement. And just being reflective, are there any areas that we're looking at for next year that we think could help improve our data?
Yeah. So like I was saying, the beginnings of really provide, of focusing on access and continuing to help, um, focus the PD around how do I get all of the kids regardless of where they're coming from, regardless of disability, you know, the language they speak, access those grade level content and skills. You know, what scaffolds do I need to put in place? What, um, technology can I use? And so that PD, I think, um, focusing that PD and then focusing observations, walkthroughs and feedback around that. Um, I just, I'm going back to thinking about conversations with the, and we'll talk more about secondary next year, tomorrow, I mean, uh, but you know, the English teachers shifting and saying, well, we're not sure exactly how we're going to get kids to access this really intense text. And so breaking that down into all the different things that you can do in terms of background knowledge, the voc, pre-teaching vocabulary chunking. So those kinds of skills I think will be what we'll focus on, um, to continue to see this.
And as Ms. Brown had, uh, said earlier, that's a, that's a shift in thinking in terms of how people are focusing and lesson planning for the classrooms. Because they're no longer sort of teaching to the middle, if you will. They're now trying to pull everybody up to, uh, with support and scaffolding. And so this was year one of really focusing in on that. Um, the other piece, at least at the elementary level, that I think is helpful is that this is year three with our literacy program and it's year four, I think, with at least the people who piloted the math program. So we're starting to see much more comfort with the curriculum. And so that allows us to shift into some of these.
Yeah, pacing with it is a huge thing, right? And getting used to that. And so this year, when you look at where people got in the pacing calendar, people got through a lot more content and not just through it. We're looking at how kids tested at each, and for example, the foundations unit, right? So as the kids get access to content, skills and, uh, co- content and skills and we're showing that they're making progress, the more we're going to see this growth and then we're, the more they can build upon that the following year.
Are there opportunities for teachers to give feedback on the new curriculum? And also, I'm, are the teachers, are they doing the same units? I mean.
So there, there's.
In a timely man, like.
So yeah, so there's different things in, in place to help with that. So, um, we do have the pacing guides and then we have trackers. So, um, the elementary teachers are putting in, um, end of unit data for every, uh, illustrative math unit for the wit and wisdom unit and also for the foundations unit. So that's something that we can look at as a whole in the common planning time that the principals and I can look at and say, oh, oh, this person's kind of falling behind in pacing. What's going on? How can we help them? And that's really where we're coming from. It's not like, gotcha. And that was a huge shift too. It's like, well, what, why, why do you need to know how we're doing? It's more just to help support, right? Cause it's, it's, it's not easy to keep the pacing and make sure kids are getting what they need, right? It's always a dance.
You're also seeing too, if this teacher is doing very well with it and the data's coming back, the kids are doing great on the assessments. You want to look at and see what they're doing. So you can try to mimic that in, in the other.
And that's also part of that common planning time, those conversations or those kinds of things. And, and for folks who have already gone through the curriculum, I always say it's like, well, it's not my analogy, but you know, you can't change a recipe unless you've made the recipe. So we look and we do it with fidelity and we see what worked and what didn't work. And as a team and, and as a grade level, if there are certain tweaks that we agree that we need to make, we can. So as common planning times, if we want to tweak the assessment a little bit or change the rubric or, you know, maybe this activity is not really working in this. So but making them as group decisions based on the data. Um, and so that's really, um, with the help of the coaches, how, happened a lot more this year because they were able to really focus on that and bring that to those common planning times.
Okay. Right. We'll shift gears and I think we're starting with, if.
Where are we going?
Meadowbrook. So we have Ms. Leyden and Ms. Lowdy here.
Jump right in.
And, and that's, yeah, Elaine thought she was first. You thought you first.
No.
We could bring you first.
I just thought it was.
Yeah.
My time.
Sorry.
You and Connor can, uh, shoot it out for the, who wants to go second? Do you want to go second?
Yeah, that was good of them. All right.
One of our, um, hotel, our sporting hotels, we have tennis. Some of the things that we have, we agreed with chronic absenteeism this year are we proactively send home letters to families in October highlighting the points of the East Salamito attendance policy. We displayed lawn signs about attendance along our Parker Street driveway. Um, we put those out later in the year rather than right away in the fall to create a renewed focus around attendance in the spring when it often starts to slide off a bit. We printed monthly attendance reports and sent home letters to every family for every student who had five or more absences. It was a small undertaking. As you can see, we sent home one thousand and twenty-three letters. Eight and nine did that, um, ourselves. So we would have those names in our head. We also made referrals to our district care coordinator for students with higher rates of absenteeism. Um, the number of referrals by month reflected on the chart on the screen. We made a total of twenty-six referrals. Four of them were re-referrals, if you will, um, students that had been making some progress after working with the care coordinator and then I noticed we're sliding off again, um, when we got to April. So I asked her to reopen those cases and reconnect with those families again.
Are there like typical reasons why they're not coming to school or is it?
Really varies and I'll give you a point out on the next.
Oh, all right.
Um, we need to make steady gains with our chronic absenteeism. We do start rate from twenty-seven point four percent in twenty twenty-two to eighteen point four. to eighteen point four in twenty-three, eight in twenty-four, and our goal this year is to get to six percent. Looking at Desi's database, uh which only gives you up to March first, we were at eight point seven percent. So I wasn't happy with that and I wanted to know where we were at the end of the year, so I dug into Panorama. And in looking at Panorama, which goes through June sixteenth, we did hit six percent. So we made our goal for a ten, for reducing chronic absenteeism. Great. Uh, the chart below, I found interesting, it was something I stumbled upon in Panorama this year. Um, it shows our improvement or sliding back in attendance in any area and it breaks it down by grades. So the positive numbers reflect a um I don't know what the best word to use is, but like a re- um increase in chronic absenteeism, I guess you would. And the other negative will show you a decrease. Um, I was.
So why does it decrease?
You wanna see the decrease, you want a negative number. I was really happy mid-year when all of the through-grade levels were decreased and I was not too pleased when I saw this um with kindergarten going from minus two all the way up to five. Um, however, after doing some research, kindergarten is one of the highest rates of chronic absenteeism across the state. I think that might be part and parcel to a lot of families feeling like kindergarten's not required, so I don't have to follow that same rule. Um, I know I did get a lot of pushback from families on letters I've sent out for kindergarten families calling me back and saying, but wait, kindergarten's not required. I still wanna let you know what your child's absenteeism rate is. Um, but when you average those three together, we still came out at minus one. So overall, as a school, we've shown a decrease in chronic absenteeism and that chart supports that. Um, digging deeper into this data, so Anton Alex, Anthony, sixty-six percent reflects thirty students out of four hundred and seventy-seventh with chronic absenteeism. Of those thirty students, nine of them have been known to have chronic health issues that require um a lot of medical appointments and things. We have a lot of students traveling to Boston for medical treatment. Um, thirteen of those have been referred to the care coordinator. One is working with a grade level counselor and we had to help secure resources, but family transportation was a major issue for them. Um, one was held out of the country for an extended period due to an immigration issue. One has now moved. One withdrew to be homeschooled and is now re-enrolled for first grade. So that is where those come from. Um, as far as the thirteen that have been referred to the care coordinator, there's really a range of different reasons. Some are illnesses like flu, some had surgery, so various different reasons. Some, there's honestly not a very good reason. Um, so we've been working with those families. Oh, and I missed the. Look right over that section. Um, average daily attendance for our students last year in June was ninety-five point four percent. This year it's ninety-five point three, so it's essentially the same. For teachers, it was an average of ninety-four percent and paraprofessionals ninety-three percent. And this reflects a um accrued time usage for the staff.
Was it, what was it last year, do you know, for teachers?
Staff?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Um, I know we've been having trouble getting the data the way we want it.
Yes, yeah.
It's, it looks certain way when you utilize accrued time and then when you add in non-accrued absences in there, it gives you their entire career. So there was not a clean way of getting that information out of there. But hopefully with this new um substitute system that we're using, we'll get the cleaner data and be able to have a more accurate representation.
As part of the secretary's contract, the negotiation. Oh, so we, we need to uh they call it uh People Find or Smart Find.
Smart Find.
Yep.
Okay, so as part of our supporting the whole child goal, this year we piloted the Deveraux Student Strength Assessment, which we call the DESA. Um, this allows us to better identify strengths and areas of needed growth um within the area of social emotional development. Go to the next slide please. So we have tier one social emotional instruction is delivered weekly by our council heads um to every classroom. We've been able to increase the amount of tier one instruction this year with the addition of the third counselor. We're using the DESA Mini as a universal screener for all students, so we give that three times a year to assess their social emotional behaviors. Teachers answer a brief series of questions for each of their students in the class, so students aren't taking it, the teachers are taking it based on their students. The graphs on this slide provide a high-level look at our DESA Mini data from fall to spring. As you can see, we shifted nine percent of our students up to the strength category. Nine percent of four seventy-nine is about forty-three students, up from three percent and fourteen students in the winter. Overall, the spring administration, the percentages break down to about a hundred and fifteen students in the strength category. Um, about three hundred and thirty-five students in the typical category and about twenty-eight students in the need category. When talking to DESA, they say typically sixteen percent score in the strength and sixteen percent in the need. And so I was really pleased to see that our numbers are much better than what is typical. Um, moving to the next slide. For any student identified as an, on the DESA Mini as possibly needing more support, then the teacher will administer um an in-depth series of questions and that's called the DESA two point O.
To the student?
To the student.
Okay.
Yep, so if the student is flagged on the DESA, then they get more in-depth. Um, this is pinpointing specific areas of growth and to provide meaningful small group instructions from our counselors. Not every student who's identified on the Mini will be identified on the two point O. Does that make sense?
After taking the two point O, they're no longer unidentified.
Yep.
Which is why you take it, right?
Yeah.
The graph on this shows a fall of spring comparison of student growth in each of the social emotional competencies for those students that were ident- identified on the two point, the DESA two point O. So our counselors saw a total of sixty-four students in grades K to two for intervention. And as a result, we see significant gains in each of the social competencies measured for students that were identified on the two point O. We saw shifts from core instruction to typical of strength of forty-two percent in self-awareness, twenty-four percent in self-management, forty-two percent in social awareness, thirty-eight percent in relationship skills and thirty-four percent in responsible decision-making and forty percent in optimistic thinking. So our key takeaway is after the first year of DESA, um it's a step in the right direction. We still need a bit more clarity. We're meeting with the people from DESA on and off. Um, it's helped us identify students that needed small group instruction that may not have been identified by the teacher um or shown a huge need. The data helped with clarifying whether a student does or does not need services on IP or a five oh four or an ACT uh or interventions. We asked teachers to do a full DESA for some of the students, even if they weren't identified on the Mini just to help um get a better understanding of their strengths for an IP meeting. And then it also helps with class placement.
The DESA itself would not trigger an IEP meeting, meaning.
No.
Or five oh four even, it just.
Just more information.
In addition to include in their IEPs.
Yes.
This information, if it's relevant.
Yes.
And the, I'm sorry.
Say previously, we'd have um kids that were already in the process of special education evaluation or already had an IEP and somebody would bring up the fact that they thought they might need counseling services. For academics, you have data to point to. This is what shows that child needs. Didn't have anything concrete to show for counseling. This gives us a tool to be able to say, well, we did this in-depth assessment and it shows that they actually have strengths in these areas or yes, in fact, they do have a need in that area, so let's work on writing that service in for them.
And also doing a universal screener allows you to provide intervention, so they might never need to have an IEP or five oh four if they get what they need.
Yeah, for example, if, if one of the classrooms overall had um, you know, low scores in social awareness, the counselors going into those classrooms would just plan their lessons around that to target us, so.
Oh, this is pre versus post, right? Okay, I just got that.
And this is, is this all the students or it's just those students that were lower?
The, this part right here is the students that were identified on the Mini.
Okay.
This is all of them. That's everybody.
Okay.
The next is the eight percent.
All right.
This represents the eight percent.
So our next steps, um teachers, especially at the beginning of the year, they have a hard time answering some of the questions. You know, getting to know their students. Um, so with the guidance counselors, we created a document for the mid-year assessment to help make things more concrete for teachers. We'd like to do this with all three rounds. We wanna revisit the assessment dates to see if they line up, um help maximize interventions. And this is still based upon teacher perception.
Yeah.
So therefore, it's not necessarily picking up the kids who are really, really quiet or anxious if you're not able to see it. So we're talking about that constantly in our weekend.
So why not give the two point O to all those students? Is it in-depth? It is, okay.
Lot more in-depth.
Yep.
It's that one group that we're really worrying that we're missing, those kids that are super quiet, that internalize everything.
Yeah.
That the teacher may not be seeing and may not be aware of, cause we're not asking the kids, we're asking the teachers and faculty. So we're still trying to explore some ways and we met with the DESA folks recently and gave them feedback around that. Um, and so they're, they're constantly looking to revise and expand their assessment, so they're taking that feedback back to their development team. Um, so we're still working with our counselors on how we can better make sure we're catching all those kids.
How long does it take the kids to do this?
Teachers do it. I feel like, how long?
So they sit with the kid?
The two point O, she's asking.
Oh.
It's on perception.
We just don't do the second one?
About students.
At this age.
I thought they did this one too. Oh, so it's all teacher perception.
Questions for the teacher.
The teacher, I see.
So they're going from, in the, the DESA Mini is about seven questions about each kid, so it's a really kind of high-level overview of the kid. If, if they score in needs in any area, then they would administer the two point O. They're not actually administering it, so that's kind of a.
That's why I was like, oh.
They fill out an, another survey about each student. It goes from a seven question to a forty question.
Wow.
So they're getting much more in-depth and those questions, it'll be multiple questions targeting any one of those competencies and so if one question is skewed one way, there's still another few questions about that so that they can get a better understanding of the student's strengths and needs. So they're answering questions about.
The students and how well they know them. So when, when do they take the first?
Not until four to six weeks into the school year, which I didn't have data for you guys in the fall.
All right.
Because we administer it later because they really need to get to know the kid.
Right.
Where they can administer any kind of social awareness survey.
So that's the pre?
That's the pre.
First one, the pre silent.
It was in October.
And so almost half of them get kicked back out on the two point O, meaning they get typical.
Once they get more in-depth into the questions.
Yeah.
And then we saw what was, I have it in front of me, sixty-five, sixty-four um kids our counselors saw in intervention fees on the DESA two point O data.
It would not have seen otherwise, necessarily.
Yes.
Yeah. Other than a flight, a teacher flagging them. Arbitrarily or observationally.
Or in years past.
Sure.
It's kind of like a universal screener for academics, right? Just the same thing, where where are our kids at?
The councils are busy.
Very.
Yeah.
Very.
Yeah.
It's very beneficial to have the third counselor fired up.
So for now, um, our goal in math was to we would like the student's global growth to increase from thirty-one percent up to fifty-five um from the previous. Um, just a reminder, as Heather said earlier, we don't administer I-ready in kindergarten and that decision was maybe following the writing of this goal. So we opted to go with the USNS, which is the universal screener for number cents, as a more developmentally appropriate um measure for kindergarten-age students. So that's the graph you're seeing on the left. And you can see on that graph, seventy-one percent of our students scored proficient on the USNS. This is our first time administering that, so it'll be interesting to see what those numbers look like in comparison next year. The graph on the right is the typical and stretch growth from I-ready and you can see that fifty-nine percent of our students met typical growth and thirty-three meant stretch. This is a twenty-eight percentage point increase over last year, which I think is pretty significant growth. Um, what are we doing? How did we get there? Um, after our second round of benchmarking in March, we held another data meeting to analyze student progress, look at which students could be exited from intervention, which students needed to now begin intervention um and reassign students based on their needs. We launched more events like March Madness and other ST Math challenges to promote excitement around math. Our main core curriculum was illustrative math and we utilized bridges exclusively this year as our intervention tool. They are not the same curriculum, but they're complementary curricula. The strength of bridges is that it really focuses more on number sense and fluency, which is where most children that are being flagged for intervention are struggling. And it complements I-ready, which focuses a lot on problem solving. Um, we also did a number of classroom walk, walkthroughs. Some of them were just tape and I'm going to walk through and sometimes Heather joined us for those lessons. And we were monitoring pacing, instructional alignment and student engagement. Our coaches did a lot of work during common planning time this year to support teachers in helping them unpack I am lessons, utilize those new pacing guides more effectively and align instruction to priority standards. And then for PD, we use staff meetings and CPT sessions to build teacher capacity, focusing on lesson planning, concept development and. We did dig a little bit deeply there for you, cause I thought this was, it was worth looking at. And looking at our perfect, we see overall, we began the year with fifteen percent of students on grade level and ended with sixty-six percent. And we reduced the number of students scoring to a more grade levels from fourteen percent down to two. Um, breaking it down by strand was also interesting to look at. Numbers and operations and algebraic thinking are two main focuses at our grade level. And historically, um, we've shown lesser growth in measurement and data and geometry. However, this year we saw significant gains in both of those areas, twenty-six to sixty percent in measurement and data and twenty-six to sixty-five percent geometry. We are attributing this to self-repeating guide with better resistance and also the way I am is structured, those feelings tend to fall a little bit earlier in the year than they did with previous curriculars, so that on top of the better pacing meant we got to more of those things throughout the course of the school year. And then as far as interventions. Five students. In case we need twenty-one over the course of the year due to sufficient growth. Where are we going next? Our math coach sent home some things over the summer, so students can access ST Math as well as some fun family activities. This year she worked with um ST Math on identifying students that were not going to hit that forty percent mark and she used kind of school-wide friendly competitions to try to boost those students. Next year, she's going to be working directly with the teachers on those individual students and what we can do to increase their percent progress. Um, this year our CPT time was based on a fixed calendar with half of the year being math and half being reading. Next year, we're gonna suffer that a little bit differently in order to better align with the needs of students, teachers. And the topics will flex week to week based on where we are in the pacing and assistant list on that area. So it'll be more timely and based on what's best. Ralph's gonna make another tweet to our data meetings. We thought they went well this year, but we wanna take them kind of to the next level. So next year, we're gonna use the data meetings to look at those tier one changes that need to be made, similar to what Heather was referring to a little bit earlier. And then we're gonna follow up with one-to-one meetings between the teachers and coaches to dig deeper into their individual data and look at what they can do at an individual classroom level. So we'll have that higher look at the grade level and then dig deeper with the teachers. Um, as you can see, our goal this year was aligning to the districts um focus on demonstrating growth. So we did set targets for our percentages of students making average growth on Devol's test. But we did not administer all the Devol's tests this year because it was new. And um, so we couldn't calculate the formal growth score. So what you're going to see in our end-of-year data reflects the percentage of students performing at core, which is on track. Some music core is on track level, not necessarily showing growth um from fall to spring. So these are strong results, but they measured the achievement.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Is, was this the first year with this?
Yes.
How did it go?
To formulate a goal, not knowing what the town is gonna look like too. And we didn't realize we weren't gonna get that composite.
Full ownership for that snafu.
So next year, we should, now that we have an idea, we better able to target our.
Teachers, the kids, it went well.
Yeah. Give us a, a lot, a lot of information.
Give us a, a lot, a lot of information, meetings and data meetings.
What did this one give you? I feel like you guys have a lot of different things.
You have a lot of different subtest. I'll get into it one minute.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
For the young, for kindergarten, there's a lot of subtests, but our goal was on nonsense word fluency, um, correct letter sounds. So sixty-five percent of our students in kindergarten will make average growth on that. So, um, for correct letter sounds, seventy-three percent of our students reached core level. And for words recoded or read correctly, I say, um, seventy-eight percent of students re- reached core level. So it looks like we went down a little bit, but for the test, they have to say like tam. So the students in the beginning have to say t, uh, t, at, mm, or t, eh, mm, and then tam and read it out. So you get points for correct letter sounds and then points for words read.
And it's also a timed test.
It's a timed test.
So that takes a long time to segment.
And are they all taking it at the same time?
No, usually you can just pull, pull a child their one-minute test. It really, you really get into a groove if you have a few people. To your parents, like you're pulling over a timed test, you get three assessments.
And that's only one of the assessments that they do. There's a number of them, but that, these are the most impactful ones to help push.
So letter identification and in the minute, how many letters can the kindergartens identify, letter sound. Or it's, that's a kindergarten, and then you get to the core, which oral reading for the older grades, which you wanna focus on. I'll get into that. So in the beginning of the year, also the benchmark changes on this data you're seeing. So the beginning of the year, they only need nine sounds in a minute, and at the end of the year, they need to hit thirty-one sounds, like t, eh, mm. Um, and at the beginning of the year, words read, you only need one word read correctly, like to say tam after. And at the beginning, end of the year, you need seven, so, or seventy-eight percent at core level, it was good. Next year, we're gonna be adding word identification fluency. Um, so we'll start introducing high-frequency words earlier in the year and try to align it, uh, the ones that are decodable. Um, so for example, in week one, if the letter is F, and then in week three, they introduce the letter I. So one of the high-frequency words could be if, so they're aligning everything to build that in. Sixty-five percent of students in first grade will make average growth in nonsense word fluency, words read correctly again. So, um, they had eighty-three percent at the core level. It started with eighty-one percent, which is awesome, but also the benchmarks had changed. Um, at the beginning, they had to read five words to meet benchmark, and at the end of the year, they had to read fifteen words to meet benchmark. Um, we did not administer oral reading fluency. At the beginning, we did mid-year and end-of-year, but next year, we're going to do all three, oral reading fluency, beginning, then one end. Um, so that will be one of our focuses, just like second grade. Sixty-five percent of students in second grade will make average growth in devils oral reading fluency. So sixty-six students reached core level. So it's good information to have. Um, we're hoping to continue to increase this by including more applied practice of this skill, uh, using decodable books. That's one of our big focuses, we've got that up. We're also gonna be introducing word identification fluency for next year, so high-frequency words, sight words, things like that. And if we go to the last slide. Overall, we saw eighty-three students in small groups, groups for reading increment and exited twenty-three students over the course of the year. So significant growth, and that's using the code in Devils for our reading.
The last one's super brief. Um, including the supportive stuff, and then we have two main focuses within this school. One was to produce incorporate more character trait assemblies like we had in the past, treat them and have them have a greater focus on diversity, treating others with kindness and respect. So we had three of those over the course of the year. I previously told you about Five Fingers who came in, um, to discuss his story on the Love More Than Ever movement. Our second one was to take the work of Dr. Jessica Pepper, which we were using at the district level and focus on belonging. Reading a story called The Smallest Spot of the Dot and focusing on a school-wide project that highlighted each student's quality. And then we also worked with our PAC to focus on the trade of kindness. We read the story Kindness Rocks. Had a school-wide Rock and Old Spirit Day and, um, staff and students. Um, and each child painted a kindness rock that they could save another, and, and even or leave within the community for someone to find. And then this, the last part was to focus on our play.
What was your rock star, Renee?
Mine?
They're a music fan, I know you are.
Um, I had to leave a lot of mine at home because my favorite band's Catalika. Oh, no, I wore, um.
You both dressed up like Kiss.
I also gave kids rocks and sent them on the bus, so that was really stressful.
They were small rocks, right?
Them out the window.
They can be on the bus, they can handle.
Good stuff.
Um, and our playground is fully open now. A little opening because that stinking grass was taken so long to establish, it was the EB fine, and sending a hundred kids running over that grass, um, it never would have established. So we started with a kind of tiered opening where we had, everybody got to go out and play one day. And then, um, preschool got to use the playground, which it really was designed for them. So they were the first group to stay and use the playground for, um, probably a month on their own. And then the last two weeks of school, we created a rotation and had everybody out there utilizing the playground. We did have a couple little snafus, um, the roller slide had an manufacturing defect, um, that we had to have addressed, and it's now been replaced. Uh, but it's, it's up and ready and it's open, and the public's put stop in buying Houston after school, which is great.
Have they been made aware of the parents and families that it's available? Great, awesome.
Was available now for use, and we're gonna work on over the summer, getting a shed in there for the recess equipment, installing a little free library and moving all the picnic tables that are outside the playground, once they move the grass in there.
Nice.
I did do that, and as you can see as well, I was getting, the pressure was on, I was getting letters constantly from the kids asking how they could go play on.
Good stuff. Anything else for Kate and Renee? Thank you both. Okay, Elaine, I guess we'll take you next.
Thank you.
She's so excited.
He says, I'm never going first, and I'm like, I don't know.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Starting with supporting the whole child, and our measures were included. And I will explain the next slide, that our goal was to have our average daily attendance rates, or was it not, or exceed seventy-five percent? And then as you can see, we met the goal with a rate of ninety-five point seven. Um, I also added, this S E chart, which you already heard is as of March. Um, but with that data, our chronic absenteeism at that point was four point nine. Which is an improvement over what it was at the mid-year, it was seven percent, so we dropped that. And at the end of last year, it was five point nine, so we even for this year also. And I included the staff attendance rates. Our teachers were at ninety-five percent, and our peers were at ninety-two. Um, just like Renee and Kate said, we don't have data from previous. Next year, we'll be able to do a comparison, but right now, that's, that's our thing. Before we move on to the next goal, uh, during the first two, three, four, five, I had our Sabers data, which was It was a survey we used, um, in addition to Panorama, which the students complete and the teachers complete. So it's similar to, um, like Desa that, uh, Renee and Kate were referring to. Um, we did not give it at the end of the year because we had MCAS, I-ready, Panorama, and our school survey that we do at the end of every year. And Nick Hutchinson, our, uh, adjustment counselor feels like by the time we do it at the end of the year, what are we gonna do with the data? Whereas in the beginning, we were using it to identify kids that needed support. Or use that data or F P S S in the, in the normal meetings. Were actually, I know I told you earlier in the year that I, um, helped Second Step this year, uh, Norma Campbell. My guidance counselor taught fifth grade, I taught fourth grade, Nick taught third grade. Um, they had been complaining for a few years about Second Step, but we really weren't able to find anything we really liked that would be an alternative. And then when I taught it this year, I really didn't like it from the top. Um, it doesn't address, I feel like it doesn't address what our problems are currently. I think Second Step is a program that's been around for a long time, and it addresses, the last unit was my favorite. Um, but it doesn't address what we're dealing with.
Is it like social emotional stuff?
It is, but it's like, the, the first unit for every grade level is problem solving. So it's trying to find a problem in the school and how can we fix it? And then, I'm not gonna remember, there's four units altogether, I can't remember exactly which one's the other one. Our last one talked more about interpersonal, which is a huge one, yeah, at our grade level. Sure, at all grade levels, but three to five, especially when we're getting to fifth grade, that's a real, um, hotspot, and it was, we weren't dealing with it until, you know, March or. So, uh, Connor and I, um, Connor actually found a program called Wayfinder. And he sat through, um, their presentation, and then Norma, Nick, and I sat through it, uh, the sixteenth, the day before the last day. Um, and it sounds phenomenal, it's, it deals a lot with bullying, social media, I, it just more of the real stuff that we're dealing with now.
Lot more tools built into it, so not only do they, um, help out with, uh, social emotional classes, um, but it's also a resource for our guidance counselors and adjustment counselors as well, um, that, based on whatever it is that they're, they're seeing, um, with the students, and if there's a particular need, um, there's just a lot of resources that they can then search for and place, uh.
I think it hit a lot more of the PE and health standards too, because there's a lot of social.
I mean, so she shared the, and she gave us all a demo, kind of, but with it being the last day of school, I haven't had time to look through the whole thing yet. She did give us, you know, a presentation, but I need to dig, you know, a lot deeper. But just from that presentation, the three of us felt that it was definitely, uh, more beneficial. And it is a little more expensive than Second Step. But what we found out in the presentation was, we've been giving Sabers, which was not affiliated with any of the programs we're using. And we spent well over a thousand dollars a year on that. Uh, Wayfinder has an assessment.
Of course.
So included in the price of the program, there will be an assessment we can use that will actually be measuring what we've taught the kids. Not that Sabers did, Sabers hit a lot of really good, uh, gave us a lot of good data, but I think using obviously the assessment that comes with the program. And it is a program that is approved, you know, by Dessie and Castle, and so it's not, you know, that we had a trouble finding another research-based program.
And it's just, it's just more engaging, you know, I, I mean, I, the kids, they go along with Second Step, but they're not with it. You know, it, it, it doesn't, it really doesn't get to the heart of, of what Second Step is trying to. Um, and I just, I, I, I think, and I'm really happy to hear that, that Mountain View feels the same, that, um, with Wayfinder, we're gonna really be able to to get in with a, a topic.
So that's the plan next year to switch?
I'm looking.
How often?
It's, you, do you pay for the Second Step every year? That's a
I do.
Out of the school base budget, and it's, do the other ones?
A little more.
Much more.
I mean, I'm saving money if I don't buy Sabers.
Right.
Um, but, um, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of using, uh, at least maybe this year the gift account. I have, um, quite a bit of money in our gift account because I don't use it that often, and we get the money from like Grin and Barrett for the school pictures and all that stuff goes in there.
There's a district discount if two or more schools.
Yes.
So, um, that, that will help.
How often are the kids given lessons on this?
So there's twenty lessons similar to Second Step, so I, all of us going by our schedules, of course. I was going into one fourth grade every day. On Thursdays, I doubled up because, I'm, excuse me, on Fridays, I doubled up because on Thursdays, we usually have leadership team, so, um, we basically taught one lesson every week to the whole grade level, twenty weeks. Now, there were times where I couldn't go. Norma and Nick had a student.
Right.
So we would cancel, uh. So then, you know, the teachers were very, because the teachers stay in the room when we're doing this, this is, um, it's not prep for Mountain View, so the teachers were fine. I mean, there were even weeks they were forgot I was coming, and I walked in. They were in the middle of something, I was like, okay, I'll come back, it's, you know, don't interrupt your lesson, so.
So a kid's getting one lesson a week?
Twenty weeks. Wayfinder will give us other activities, so it may take longer. You know, if I'm on a topic that I feel is really important in fourth grade, and I wanna spend more time on it, then I'll have that luxury, whereas Second Step, the other thing about Second Step was, you know, the lesson might be fifteen minutes or it might be forty-five. And I was doing like thirty-minute windows, so here, here I am walking in the room, and the kids are, oh, what are we doing today? I was like, oh, it's a quick one, so don't get too excited, but I, I don't know, it just, and I found it boring, to be honest, and if I'm finding it boring, then the kids are gonna be.
Right. Sounds like outdated.
It's, sorry.
Sounds outdated.
It is, it's very outdated, it's not.
How long are the lessons in Wayfinder?
I, that I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to look at that when I go into the.
All right.
But I'm assuming about the same amount of time. So.
Renee, is Metabrook still using Second Step? Do you use Second Step at all?
We are, but I find the topics are a little bit more relevant at her age, like they don't talk about what is the problem in the school. It's more of like, what's in a, what's a problem you've encountered on the playground? So it's more about interpersonal problem solving, and that carries throughout the entire. Um, and we've purchased, I don't know if the other schools are still using the, the old picture cards, but we purchased the online version. Which is a little bit more current than the, um, the old cards, the cards that they had. But our counselors are happy with, with, with the addresses, but they do allow supplementing. Desa had a lot of lessons built into it as well, sounds similar to Wayfinder, so our counselors were able to pull lessons out of there to escape the concepts.
Right.
Moving on, so we had the same goals at the district for teaching and learning. And, uh, we wanted sixty-five percent of students reaching typical growth and thirty-five percent of students reaching stretch growth and reading. Our math goal was to achieve fifty-five percent reaching typical growth and twenty-five percent reaching stretch. This slide, I want to apologize first, because when I put it in your packet, I forgot that you have to hover over the dots to see what grade it is, so I added those numbers in for you today, when I was going through the notes. So those are the grade levels, uh, next to the dots. So you look to the right, and we'll start with math. All three grade levels were in the high-performance, high-growth range. Um, and the one in the left, fourth and fifth were in the high-performance, high-growth, and third grade almost made it. Um, they were in the low-performance, high-growth. I, I can't, when you look at the next numbers, I can't figure out why, but, um, so these parts show, um, we that, we met both a reading and math goals for the year, starting with reading, like I said, our goal was sixty-five percent for typical, we were sixty-seven percent. And for stretch growth, we were thirty-five percent goal, and we reached forty-three percent, um, on average. All of the grade levels in, um, all of the grades in math. Grade four was three points shy of the sixty-five percent typical growth, but on average, it was sixty-seven. So I was so very proud of these numbers, um. To be honest, after we give the test at the end of the year, right after MCAS, I'm. To be honest, after we give the test at the end of the year, right after M C A S, I'm always nervous because they've had it, so I was really proud of how they, they took it seriously. So for math, um we exceeded both typical and stretch by almost ten points. So our typical growth uh goal was fifty-five percent and sixty-four percent of our students achieved that, and our stretch growth was twenty-five percent and thirty-two percent met the stretch growth. Um and all three of them exceeded the goal in typical and stretch. Was very, very proud of everybody and love our hard work. So this is our performance on iReady. Sixty-three percent of Mountain View students scored in the on-grade level or above categories in reading. And that's up from thirty-three percent in the fall. And um an increase overall of thirty percent. Seventy-four percent of our students scored on grade level or above in math, which blew me away. That's up from thirty-one percent in the fall, so that's an increase of forty-three percent uh in math. Again, extremely proud of all the hard work that they did. So the next slide is projected proficiency. So we're starting with readings. And forty-two percent of Mountain View students are projected to score proficient or above on M C A S. Only four percent of students are projected to not meet expectations. Which is very low if you compare it to the fall numbers and to our numbers last year. So last year, our projected proficiency in reading was thirty-five percent, so um we've already gone up uh with that projection for this year. Um the next slide is math. I'm going to bash it on southeast. Our projected proficiency on the math M C A S is fifty-seven percent. Um and only six percent are projected not to meet expectations. Uh our projected proficiency last year in math was thirty-eight percent. Um so this is nineteen percent higher than last year.
Is it correlating to the actual score, are they?
So last year, um in reading, the projected proficiency was thirty-five and our actual proficiency was four. And in math, the projected was thirty-eight and the actual was fifty-one. So the reading was close, the math was significantly higher than what they projected. You have to remember that iReady is a completely different test.
Right, but it's, I'm trying to predict though, and it doesn't do a very good job.
Opinion, I.
Did a better job.
I mean, I hope, I'm hoping that last year our actual scores were higher than the projected proficiency, so I'm hoping the same thing happens this year. I'll guarantee. We had a new M C A S system this year. It was much easier on the front end for Norma and I to set up, a hundred times easier. Using it in the previous system, the teachers could actually have on their screen where the kids were in the test, like how much longer, you know, how many more questions they needed to do. We really can't see that anymore. Uh we also, which I knew we were going to get some kind of communication from Desi on this. At the end, uh Norma and I, before I did the principal certification, we could go in and see, make sure that all kids had clicked submit or were marked as completed. We could not see that this year. Sure enough, got an email about a week and a half ago that one student in grade hadn't clicked submit. Of course, we got the email on the Friday before the last day of school and this student was going to a camp this past Monday, or sorry, last Monday. So we had to call the parent and open the Chromebook. And all they had to do was click on the app for M C A S. And once they clicked on the app, they should have the lock, because we didn't even have her login information anymore, you know, you destroy all that after they take the test. But all she, they had to do was have her log in and it submitted.
It must have created a workaround after.
Yes. Well, we also had glitches, I can't remember if it was math or science, that they Desi warned us with an email that there was gonna, there could be some glitch in the middle of taking it, so um yeah, but I, it would have been helpful, I mean, we were trying to see, so that we could do that ahead of time, but. Okay, so our last is uh to provide an inclusive and supportive culture and climate. And on this slide, I'm focusing on the Panorama survey for students. And I put in a chart of the survey that I send out via Google Forms to the students and staff every year. So starting with the Panorama survey, which is in the upper left, the results show a slight drop in school climate and a larger drop in positive feelings from the mid-year point. But the other four categories show slight increases from. When I looked at the data from last year, our positive responses went up in all of the categories except school climate, which only went down by one percent compared to last year, did improve. Um the largest gain was in the engagement category. Last year we were at sixty-five percent positive responses and now we're at ninety-one. So that was a huge jump. Um the other chart shows data for the surveys that I sent out. I only put in the chart the questions that were similar across all three surveys, so you could see a comparison. Um so in, for example, are, do you all feel that you're treated respectfully and fairly? So ninety-five percent of students feel they are, ninety-seven percent of families feel they are, eighty-seven percent of staff. Had a little bit of a wonky year this year at Mountain View, but hopefully that will improve next year. Um I did not have.
But a hundred percent are happy at Mountain View though.
That's every year, I have to say, they say they're happy. This is where.
Please.
This is where I see the disconnect, um so if you look at feel safe. When, now, when I do my surveys, just like I kind of am fair and very direct and to the point, so the question says, are you happy to be at Mountain View School? Feel welcome, do you feel safe? Um and they answer yes or no, I mean, most of the questions are simple, yes or no. Uh there's no gray areas, sometimes if you give kids that age too many choices, it's too confusing. So in the panorama section on safety, there were three questions and they were all about bullying. In my opinion, feeling safe is more than just bullying. You know, do they feel like when they're at school, nothing's bad is going to happen to them? That they have people in the building that will help them if they have a problem, things like that, so I see a disconnect because a hun- ninety-five percent of the kids feel safe. A hundred percent of the families think their kids are safe at Mountain View and a hundred percent of the staff feel safe. So that's where I saw the disconnect with the seventy-six percent uh panorama.
We're going with a new data dashboard platform next year, so we'll be able to tweak those even more.
I mean, I just think bullying is not, first of all, bullying's not the only thing about being safe, but second, my sense of this being true is, they all understand that's not a word that is bullying. Broke him off the bus, he called me a jerk, he's bullying me. No, he's, he's being mean, but it's not bullying, so you don't really know the difference.
Almost kept you to ten.
Wow, Connor retro.
A promise. Anything else for Elaine?
Yeah.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thanks, Elaine.
Maple Shade.
Right, um so uh when you're talking about attendance, like, um I really liked this uh this slide from, from Desi. It's not something that I need to report in the past, but when it comes to attendance, I'm always thinking about what is the next thing to. So if you remember, every month, um going to Panorama, you know, I, I look students are that are sometimes flagged by Panorama, I then reach out to I'm a believer that every student has a story and determining what that story is, it's important for me, it's important for teachers and counselors, and able to help support that student and work with the um parents around whatever it is that they need in order to help get the kid to school. Um looking at this, I, you know, this is, this is gonna be really good work for me or summer to start to get into some of these percentages um from a demographic standpoint, to start to look for the, the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year, what are the things that I should be working on based on the data I've seen, you know, right now? So just out of cursory glance, you know, looking at the Hispanic and Latino population, this is an area that I, I really wanna work with um my team on to determine, you know, who the students are and what can we do to better support them, so. Um you know, we, we definitely have, you know, systems in place to uh to communicate with families. Um but this is that important next step that um I, I had been grasping for, so um I, I now have some data to support some, some next steps and what that outreach might look like. So that's uh, that's what we're gonna be uh doing over the summer, I'll be looking at that, I'll be putting that personal goals for the fall. Um in terms of staff attendance, um you know, it's on there. Um so like as has been discussed already for next year, once we get the um the substitute system in place, we'll have, we'll have better tracking for data as we move along throughout the course of the year next year.
Connor, what is the, if you go back to that, the absent ten day or more, if you go to the twelve point six, what does a twelve point six represent? That's not individual students.
The absent ten days or more.
So the first one's a percentage, the second one is a number of days, the third row is what? What are those?
I assume that that is percentage of students who are absent ten days or more.
It's a percentage?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it doesn't matter the demographic, it's just.
Okay, it's a percentage, okay, thank you, yep.
Uh with teaching and learning, uh you can go to the side, um so you know, as we've discussed um this uh throughout the course of the year and tonight, um you know, the, the focus on curriculum was the big lift um throughout elementary um this year, and it was something that I really focused on. So, you know, Gordon, um you know, spoke to the fact that this is the third year for the literacy curriculum. It is the fourth and fifth year for the math curriculum, but in many ways, this was back to year one. Um because we asked the teachers to just start from scratch. Using um Heather's analogy, you need to, to be able to, to cook using the recipes before you start making changes. So teaching with fidelity was the, the big focus, you know, through the year. And you know, I'm happy to say that in both reading and in math, um we met our goals, um you know, to met our typical and our stretch growth goals in both um reading and math. That is purely due to the level of effort and work that our teachers put into um understanding both of the curriculum, um collaborating with one another on our weekly um C P T meetings uh in order to make sure that there was that, that deep sense of understanding as to what the curriculum was asking for. Um and it was consistent from class to class to class. So teaching with fidelity was the focus, and as we talked about, you know, having a pacing guide um to, to really help create parameters um and, and to make sure that everyone was in, was within a certain range um of each other. It allowed um for greater uh collaboration, it allowed for teachers to be able to, to help themselves. And then additionally, I'm a firm believer of release days, um which our teachers at Maple Shade uh took advantage of because as important as C P T is, um the time goes by quick. Um and it can be very hard in the hustle and bustle of the day um to take off your teacher hat and then put on your, your professional uh learner hat. Um not only that, you know, you just taught the entire day and you're gonna have to pick the kids up from, from P G. Um so those release days are something I really believe in. Allows them to really step out of the classroom and away from their kids for a more extended period of time to get into that, that deeper level of planning where they're feeling, if it's waiting, is them really look at the expectations of the modules and then begin to have those conversations about where the redundancies, what can be cut out, what can be streamlined, you know, what um, you know, needs to be, you know, really supposed. Um so that deep level of planning um and collaboration occurred on a weekly basis and it occurred sporadically throughout the course of the year um with uh with those release days, but it led to a significant amount of uh success um for our students.
What are release days? Is it like P D days or is it?
So a release day is when uh we free the, the, the teachers up teaching in that day, we have a substitute teacher in those classes for that day, uh whether it's a half day or a full day. So it's a significant amount of time to sit down and plan. Um and I think that you're able to get, you know, real fraction momentum um with, with planning.
Are they planning together? And how often do they have release days?
I, it depends on the team, it depends on uh, it depends on the team and it depends on the, the subject area. So I would say off the top of my head, um we were able to, to have release days two, three, thirteen.
I felt like I met with third grade twice, fourth grade twice. And then Anne met with math, they're usually facilitated. So they, we didn't have a coach three to five, so I would step in, but.
Two, three times.
When we have a limited two, two P Gs a year.
Professional development days.
Right.
So you have the professional development days and then you have this more intensive planning.
Yeah. And so it, it just allowed for them to really look at the overview of what was expected. Um and then the, the C P T time, uh you know, allowed us to, allowed them to, to be able to take those lessons themselves. Rather than the, the larger over.
Do they have time during the day? Like, do they have for other common planning time? Yeah.
They have, I mean, so every Wednesday, they have common planning time that's facilitated by um either Heather or our math coach, Anne. Um so that's, that's once a week and that is that time to set. Or it's um facilitated by the department chair of that particular grade level. So Wednesdays are set, there is an agenda, there's a protocol to be followed. And then on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, that block of time is open for them. Or additional common planning time, should they so choose. Um and then from um a special ed standpoint, all of our special ed uh teachers and their inclusion counterparts, they do take the time that's offered to them throughout the course of the week to do additional planning, to make sure that those um you know, there's coordination around special education services as we're getting into the I E Ps and what that looks like for those inclusion classrooms. So teachers are taking advantage of the time that's being provided to them to, to plan. Though the only time throughout the course of the week that is um mandated for are those Wednesdays.
Do you wanna talk about math?
Um no, I, I mean, math, I, it, it's just very similar, we, we met the, the typical and, and we met the, the stretch um the, the, the stretch growth, so we're just, we're proud of, of all of the work that, that went in um to uh the curriculum and, and lifting the curriculum and, and making it uh applicable for the students throughout the course of the year. In terms of the projected proficiency, um as you'll see, um you know, compared to last year, we're seeing an increase with projected proficiencies, which is very exciting. Because if you remember, um this year, uh you know, we, we did really well on the M C A S test. So if this, if there's pattern, then you know, uh you know, all of the hard work will, will pay off with um higher gains in, in the M C A S as well. Um but I'm, you know, I'm really proud of, of math. Um these, these are great things um compared to, to last year. Um and again, it's, it's familiarity with the curriculum, it is the, the weekly planning, it is the uh release days, it's the um you know, we also have the benefit of having on top of illustrative math um as the core curriculum, but we have S T math as the supplemental piece as well, it's very friendly for students in grades three to five. Um and it's very, uh school-based, but we're, we're, you know, it's exactly what they are and there's fun challenges to her throughout the course of the year. Um so it's, it's not on the slides, but we, we met our S T math goals as well. Um and S T math last year, when we had a meeting with them, I believe that they said there is a correlation between um students meeting their. Um, and ST math last year when we had a meeting with them, I believe that they said there is a correlation between, um, students meeting their, uh, puzzle. Um, their puzzle goals, their puzzle completion goals, um, and I ready, I believe they said it was a thirteen point increase. Um, so I, I can't speak to whether or not that's true. Um, but the fact that we did see such gains in the MCAS test last year in math. In each one of the demographics on the MCAS test, knowing that, you know, we achieved the ST math scores, um, last year. And this year, and this is our projected proficiency. Um, I think that there is a correlation, uh, between students doing well on, um, ST maths. And, and how they're achieving, uh, those scores, uh, I ready as well.
Kiddos will often make connections to you, like, what I did with Gigi or vice versa.
Yeah. And then, um, with, uh, just the, the, the school culture and climate, uh, you know, I mean, Maple Shade continues to be, uh, a very event. The, the points, um. Unfortunately, it's the second year in a row where we've had to cancel our art show and movie night, um, which is our, our kids always look forward to, um. Due to, to weather, um, but the end of the year does bring a lot of opportunities for, you know, it's, uh, about seven. Um, around the events, um, uh, for our students. And I think that this, uh, you know, shows in what it's here. Ourself, you know, which are, are linked to us, uh, to the school that I'm seeing. I'm really happy to see that our students, you know, with these two questions, these first two. When you feel like giving up, how likely is it that you'll keep on trying? Ninety-four percent? And when you're stuck, um, how likely are you to try it in, in a new way? Ninety-three percent? Um, you know, I mean, I think that there's a, a direct correlation between that and, and the scores that we're seeing on, on I ready. Um, that our teachers are, are instilling that level of resilience within our students, um, to keep on trying, to persevere, to push through. Um, and our students are recognizing in, in themselves, which I have to believe builds a sense of confidence, which is then able to translate and, and transfer over. Uh, when they take the, uh, these assessments. Um, and I feel like I'm a part of community at school, eighty-four percent. Um, you know, I want that number to go up, but that's, that's a pretty solid number, um. You know, that our kids feel like this is, this is a home away from home. Which is the goal for me, um, as principal of.
Excellent. Anything else for Connor? Well, good.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Um, looking at your data, what are some next steps or things that you're, you're looking into maybe changing or implementing for next year?
Great question. Um, and it's, that is a question that has, has plagued me, um. Over the last couple of years because so much of the work that teachers have done have been with fidelity. And I can't, to be honest, ask the teachers, uh, each, miss fidelity, understanding that, you know, that this curriculum is, is pretty tight. It does not leave a lot of room. Uh, and if you teach with fidelity, those minutes add up and there's not a lot of time. Uh, so I haven't been able to ask teachers to teach with fidelity. And then look at your I ready scores and then start running small group interventions based on the data that we're seeing. Um, so next year, to answer your question, um, we're, we're gonna, we have been able to create, uh, a wind block. Uh, for our kids, um, so now we're gonna be able to, to do both. We're gonna be able to teach the, the, you know, with fidelity to, you know, continually keep that high level of rigor. Um, and then really challenge our students and get our students to, to challenge themselves. But then now for, um, thirty minutes a day, we're gonna be able to, to have that next step. So what are we seeing? Um, you know, what do we know students are struggling if now we have that time? Um, and so we'll be able to, to look at that, we'll be able to, to track that. This goes hand in hand with, this is all spoilers for, for next year's beginning of the year. But, um, so that's gonna go hand in hand with the revised activating process that, that we're going to have, that where we're gonna really, um. Looking at students, um, if we're, if we're seeing that, that, that they struggle, um. You know, how can we now be able to utilize the time that we have to give them what they need? So I'm excited about next year because we have those two, uh, those two steps in place that.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Appreciate all of you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Summer. Nice having. Like having elementary.
Don't forget that Shaw, Kate.
Can you just focus on this and then? That was nice. What to say?
What to say?
It's nice to have.
It is. It gives a little bit of a different vantage point on it. Like, I'm just, I'm thinking even just now as they're walking out about. The difference between the math and the reading scores and listening to the changes that have been made at the, at, um, Meadowbrook.
Mm-hmm.
Up, you know, and how they're really. Get, getting a little bit more in depth with their assessment earlier. I think we're gonna start to see the positive changes as we go up in grade level, even just from that. So I agree with you. It was nice to think about it just in the, from an elementary perspective.
Okay, excellent discussion. Thank you all. Okay, we will move along. We have seven point one. We have requests from Rotary Club for advertisements on the. Property of the high school.
Actually, uh, it's gonna be at Maple Shade.
Maple Shade, oh, for the laser show.
Their, um, rotary concert.
Yep.
And, um, you have a variety of, um, advertisers, everything from American Health Homes to, to Lenny's Market. To, um, Springfield Spring Corp. Um, WB Hill.
Just for the concerts.
It would, yeah, they, um, if they're going with a specific sign, it would be up during the concert and taken down at the end of the concert. And then you have, um, East Village Tavern. Doesn't look like East Village Tavern is gonna post a sign, but they must have contributed to sponsorship. That they probably wanna acknowledge them. You know, um.
Mm-hmm.
During the, uh, opening announcements. Some that are gonna be on the twenty-fifth, some that are gonna be on the third, which is the laser light show.
Some are flagged, some are signs.
Right.
Some are yard signs. First one?
No, this one, they're not.
Any questions, comments on the signs for Maple Shade?
No.
Um, so they're all one big signs then, right? Looks like, um, they're all for either the twenty-fifth or the third.
Yep.
Yeah, so as long as we specify that they're being approved for one day, one day. It's cool. I would take a motion to approve signs as requested.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the signs as requested.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Miami's special, or say I.
I.
I, those opposed nay. It's four to zero.
Thank you.
Move that.
Let the Rotary Club know.
Excellent.
And the laser one.
What time is the laser light show, do we know?
Third.
Um, I'm assuming it's gonna be similar to. You know, when it works on, maybe nine.
It's not dark until eight thirty.
Least.
Nine, nine thirty, somewhere in there.
Okay. Awesome. We have some point two adoption of a new preschool curriculum.
On your packets, um, Ms. Brown's gonna walk us through working with the, uh, preschool teachers. To strengthen, uh, our curriculum and go through a process similar to what we've gone through. With, um, literacy curriculum over the last few years, utilizing. Desi's platform and a lot of their research to put in high quality instructional materials.
So we're utilizing Desi's process, which is outlined here, um, if you're interested. Um, it's just kind of a template that I provide when we start the process. Um. This high quality instructional material movement, it is well on its way, but the, in terms of, um. Reports that show. How great they are, um, they're still kinda catching up with the eight ball. So there's Ed reports, it doesn't even review pre-K curriculum. Uh, there's Mass curate, which is based on Ed reports, but it's Massachusetts, basically have their own rubric. So we utilize that rubric because they have not evaluated any pre-K yet on that platform. Um, so they chose Savvas, Three Cheers for, uh, for preschool. Savvas is a well-known company. Other things that they produced are. Um. Have been rated high on the, uh, Ed reports site. And it is aligned with, uh, the Massachusetts pre-K's, uh, scope, uh, sorry, standards. Um, there's scope and sequences outlined here. Um, what's great about it is it really brings together all of the things. So reading, uh, math, social, emotional. All housed in a play-based model, which is really what Desi's moving towards. Um, and so the, the pre-K teachers are really excited to have something coherent. Again, we were talking about that horizontal planning, but also the vertical planning to make sure that kids are getting what they need to be ready for kindergarten. Um, as well as data collection. They really don't have a unified way to collect information on kids in terms of assessments. Um, not only to monitor how kids are doing, but also to pass that on in any kind of, uh, way that's coherent and, uh, to the kindergarten teachers. Um, so they have chosen Three Cheers for pre-K and would like your permission to adopt it for the pre-K curriculum. By the way, it's been homegrown in the past, so we've not, not replacing them. They've been using some foundations, some Haggerty, some of the other things, but, um, they haven't. A, a whole holistic curriculum.
The district need to purchase the curriculum?
We would utilize the curriculum renewal monies that we've already set aside. Uh, so it would be.
This year's.
Have you got any feedback from anyone that has been using it, like in other districts or anything?
Yeah, and I, I don't have the name of the district off the top of my head, but.
Fine. How are they saying that it's, it's going?
Uh, yeah, but what, what's the.
Successful.
They said successful and also the preschool teachers were really excited about it too. Which is really helpful when you're implementing a new curricula, you know, um, talking to their colleagues who are using it in other places. Um, so. Theme-based, it, it's really all the things that you do in a preschool, but you have all the materials there, you have lesson plans. Um, and it will just be much easier for them to plan together, knowing that they're doing, using the same.
Many and more than half are on IEPs in a preschool. So how does this fit into the whole classroom?
Right.
Organization?
That's why Jenny approached me, Jenny Sullivan, the Director of Student Supports, because, um, you know, when you're trying to meet IEP goals. And we don't have kind of a, a written curriculum in place, it's, it's hard to then say, well, we're gonna modify this to meet this goal. Or we're gonna use these scaffolds of these accommodations. So tha- that's exactly it, to have something to start with. And then what are the entry points for kids to, um, enter this? But again, with that same idea of having grade level expectations, knowing that all kids are coming at it from different places. And what do we need to put in place to, so they can access it?
A lot of the, um, examples are on, on screens, I assume iPads.
So they have that, they have things avail- available, but this actually comes with trade books and physical things.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Um, the nice thing about it being online as well, that, so they have a whole, uh, library. So we use Learning Ally for kids to have audiobooks, but they have all their books that, um, there's the actual book. So the picture book, but it will read it to them and they're translated into many different languages. So that's something we can utilize at home too, which is great, which Learning Ally does not have that feature. Um, and we do have a lot of kiddos coming to preschool who are second language learners and this is their first, uh, experience with English. So that will be a real helpful, um, way to remove some barriers too.
I imagine a lot of the new curriculum is online based, or at least partially. My concern is that we're headed too far into that route, especially at the younger ages in pre-K, so.
The pre-K teachers completely agree with.
Okay.
And don't wanna have anything to share this.
Great.
They like consumable.
And I agree with them and I appreciate that. Okay.
This is a play-based. I'm familiar with the curriculum. High quality, obviously, but, um, I lo- if it's not play-based, then it shouldn't be. I, I love that, that you're saying that the teachers are really focused on that, cause I agree with you. It did seem really, just looking at the way it was presented, seemed heavy on the digital stuff. But it's great that that's an option and I love that the teachers are focused on, you know, the engaging, the, on the play. And I think a lot of these publishers, especially the ones that are like Savvas or that have a lot, they wanna give you all the bells and whistles because they think that's gonna.
Yeah.
Whereas the bells and whistles are often why we don't want.
Right.
The materials and not need it. Exactly. Um, so it comes with it, but all the other things come as well, so.
Okay. Please, uh, keep us posted as it.
Oh, yeah.
Limited, yes. Um, so I would take a motion for the adoption of the new preschool curriculum, please. Motion made by Williams. Second by Amy and any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries four to zero. Thank you, Heather, for that.
Okay, seven point three. We have the acceptance of a brand new Hoyer Lift from an ELPS family.
So this is a, a, um, donation from a, a family, one of our, um, families that, um, whose students have attended. The, all of our schools and, um, they're donating this Hoyer Lift, which can lift up to forty pounds. Uh, and we have Hoyer Lifts in our schools, uh, but this would certainly come in incredibly handy in some of our special education rooms.
Great questions.
More than my home for my brother, this looks like a really nice.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So.
Well, no, it's very, uh, very generous of the family to donate and I'm sure Candy will recognize them.
They will.
Somehow, okay. I'd take a motion for the acceptance, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a brand new Hoyer Lift from an ELPS family.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Amy, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries four to zero. And as discussed in, um, executive session, I would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement. For a three-year contract with ELPS Secretaries.
I make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for the new three-year contract with ELPS Secretaries.
Motion made by Amy. Second by William, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries four to zero. And one more, please.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for a new three-year contract with ELPS Custodians.
Motion made by Amy.
Second.
Second by Antonella, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed nay, that carries four to zero. Ooh, thank you. Thank you. And if there is no other business, um. Well, Pat, for being here tonight, appreciate you, my friends. And, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Amy, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay.